It's about a minute and a half before the top of the hour. Maybe we could just stop and have a silent meditation in the moment for the loss in our community. Louis Martin's wife passed away. Louis is a fireman, a hard worker for the community. He had a lovely wife. And it's just, I've been sick about it all day. So maybe we'll just take a moment and then have a moment of silent meditation and then we'll start the meeting. Okay, thank you very much for that. It is seven o'clock, so we'll open up. John, are you here? So we'll say the Pledge of Allegiance, and I'll ask our solicitor then to open with the prayer. So here we go. Shane, will you lead the pledge, please?
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's go to the Lord in prayer. Dear heavenly Father, watch over this council tonight, and Lord, may they be guided by You. We make decisions by You. Lord, we ask You to be with Louis and his family this evening. Lord, as they are going through a horrific loss, Lord, may You just put Your arms of comfort around them and just be with them and lift them up. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Marty. Patty, the roll call, please.
Mr. Ackerman.
Here.
Mr. Baer.
Here.
Mr. Baker.
Here.
Mrs. Nagy.
Here.
Mr. Irwin.
Here.
Mrs. Panarian.
Mr. Smith is absent.
Mrs. Valentine.
Here.
Mayor Smith.
Here.
Jim Fritz.
And Brian Ryber.
I just want to introduce, we have some special guests tonight. Senator Stefano, thank you for being here.
Who's he on?
Yes. Brian Fluthman, Chairman of the County Commissioners, and Dusty Ware, our sheriff. We thank you for being here tonight.
Thank you. Okay, we did the roll call. We have three sets of minutes which we have to approve. Our regular meeting on July the 9th. Then we had a special meeting, which was mainly for the side-by-sides. That was a crowded house. That was on July 23rd. And then we had a special meeting for property matters. Most of the meeting was in executive session. And so I read through the minutes and could find no problems with them. Are you making a motion to approve?
No, I haven't changed.
Okay, go ahead. Which minutes?
July 23rd, the special meeting, on page three. I just wanted to clarify. It says Zigger quote, "was solicited by Councilmember Nagy." That was after prior discussion with council at the last meeting. I just wanted that noted, that I had asked for approval to do that before.
Any objections to that? Are there any other corrections or additions? If not, could we have a motion? I'd ask for one motion, one motion to approve all three?
I'll make it.
Okay, Ron makes that motion. Clarence seconded it. All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Unanimous. We're gonna move this, I know everybody's here for the side-by-side ordinance, and we're gonna move that up. We have to do our guests first and public comment, and then I'm gonna give a short mayor's report, president's report. Shane will give a mayor's report, and then we'll have the vote. So if you have anything to say about the ordinance, you should be doing it under the public comment session. So we thought, rather than keep you here late in the night, we'll try to get that taken care of early on. So the finances and the monthly bills. We have two items to discuss. Shane, did you want to comment on the body cameras for the police department? $5,941? Yes, those, that is with a contract for five years. Now, that can either be paid as installments each year, or that can be paid at one set time, and we would complete with that. So. I think that we had given a limit of $3,500. Correct. And the cameras are actually under that, but then when you figure the maintenance, so Patty seemed to think that we just pay it all now, rather than have to do it in installments. Is that what I thought you said?
I want to do, yeah.
It'd be easier, that way we won't forget it. So that would be something that just we wanted to point out to the council on that. So could we have a motion then to go ahead and approve these cameras and the payment, the full amount, please? Thank you, Jenny. And a second. Karen, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? That's unanimous. And then the fireworks balance?
That will be around $12,000. Still waiting for a callback. Traditionally, they like to wait to the end of the year to send out, but they have, correct me if I'm wrong, Patty, they have worked with us in the past?
I did get it, $12,000.
Okay, perfect.
You don't have $12,000 in your fireworks fund, so how do you want to pay the balance?
How much is in my fireworks fund?
Well, could we just take it out of the general fund? What do you think? Is that acceptable to everybody? Do we need a motion to do that?
We do.
Okay, we'll make a motion to pay the fireworks with tapping $3,000 from, roughly $3,000 from our general fund. Gonna have a motion, please. Karen makes it, and Terry seconded it. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Unanimous. Terry, go ahead with your report now.
As of tonight, we got a balance in the general fund of $53,166.92. And the bills for approval is $5,077.81. I'll make that motion to pay.
Pay them all. Okay, thanks, Terry. And Karen seconded it. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Once again, unanimous. Okay. Oh, the other thing I would maybe say on finances yet, the budget. Had we thought, Patty, about trying to do that in the September meeting, you think, at the finance committee?
I'm working on it now.
So we're gonna shoot to have the budget. This is for everybody in here. People question, you spend money on this, and you don't spend enough money on this. So at the finance committee, which will be the Thursday night before our next meeting in September, we'll have the police, then the personnel, and then the finance committee will start and go through the budget. So if you have any concerns about the finances of the borough, that's the time to come and make your input known. It'll be the Thursday night, I don't know what the date is, before our September meeting. County Commissioner and the North Street Bridge, welcome aboard. Please, please.
All right. First part of the story, I am still trying to track down whatever happened to the insurance money that the county was paid. Again, this all happened in 2017. I was true for Brian Fluthman at that time, so I have no idea what was going on in the county. But with the bridge itself, myself and Commissioner Kimmel have looked at a couple of different avenues to pursue with this. Commissioner Kimmel contacted the Knight Company. Okay, and what the Knight Company does is they'll take the North Street Bridge and they will refurbish it. Okay? So we would basically have the North Street Bridge, just a new refurbished version of that. What I did is I contacted a company out of Bedford County, Bedford Reinforced Plastics. And what they do is, I guess that's a little, wow, let me see, maybe one. They basically have a bridge made out of plastic reinforced fiberglass. Okay? It comes, we either get it fully assembled, or they can bring it here and assemble it on-site. The interesting thing about this is they are currently developing, the largest span that they covered at this time was 70 feet. Well, the span at North Street, I think it's like 97 feet. Just so happens that they are, they just developed one that's 100 feet long, 10 feet wide. They're gonna take it down to West Virginia University, put it through all the diagnostics, all the tests, weight, wind, and everything. The gentleman that I spoke to, he's a salesman, but the gentleman that I spoke to was really confident that it would pass all the tests. With that, he said normally, once they do that, they bring them back, they disassemble them, put them up on the shelf, and there they collect dust, or they get parted out. He seems to think, being the fact that it is our neighboring county, and he is from Somerset County, he seems to think that we could get that one at a pretty cheap price. And we can go one of two ways with that. We can either remove the North Street Bridge, put that down, or if we want to keep that look, we could let the framing of the North Street Bridge up, put that thing over top of the deck, and basically have a new bridge inside of an old structure. The one thing that is looking like a hang-up is possibly the fact that the North Street Bridge is a historic bridge. And with that, it may push our timeframe back a little bit. It may force us to go, you know, with the restructuring of it. But that's the two avenues that we are looking to pursue. You know, again, not that I want to blame anyone else, but again, this is one of those cans that got kicked down the road, and you know, here it is lying in urbanized state, and now we have to do something with it. And believe me, I want to give you guys the best product that we can, at the best price that we can do for the county. You know, I know that that bridge is used down there. I want to give you guys the opportunity to have a bridge that's replaced or refurbished. All I can tell you is I will do my damnedest to do it.
Brian, I appreciate you coming here, and I like what you're saying. We didn't get that optimism from the former county commissioners. So, and you said it exactly, a lot of people utilize that bridge, walking their dogs, bicycling. So I'm glad to hear that you have plans to move forward, and I think that's wonderful. Are there any questions while Brian's here from council or our friends in the audience?
Now, will this be a bridge strictly for walking, or will it be for cars and walking?
The, well, if we refurbish it, I guess it's gonna come back the way that it was, and it'll be for cars and for walking. If we go with the plastic reinforced fiberglass, it's gonna be a walking bridge. All right.
I'm interested in the cost of the county to refurbish these bridges.
We haven't gotten that far yet.
You haven't, that's good.
No, no. Like I said, I know the one, the plastic reinforced fiberglass, that guy didn't give me a definite number, but he said he thought we could get it at a much lower price than what we would if it wasn't the value of it.
Since it's deemed a historic bridge, what are the parameters that you have to go through?
That I don't know yet. We are still looking at those hoops, and I don't know what all we're gonna have to jump through, you know?
If you put it in as a walking bridge, is it possible you raise it up to the top of the levy, raise the height of it?
That I'd, again, that's something that we would have to get Eads in here and look at the structuring of it, and that's a question I wish I had an answer for, but I sure don't at this time. Not even know which route we're gonna be able to take. I wish they would have taken some pictures of it to show you. On one of the main upright structures, there is a six-foot-long crack in, you know, and that was something that Eads was really concerned with. Again, I'm not a structural engineer, so I gotta go by what they tell me.
Well, Brian, thank you for coming over. Appreciate it, and you don't have to come every month. We will, just kind of keep us up to date and try to move it along.
Yes, for sure.
I know these things take time.
Yeah.
But we really appreciate the fact that you're committed to putting something back there, at least for our pedestrians and the joggers and the bicyclers.
So I kind of, you know, I refer to this as away games. I kind of like coming to meetings that I'm not running. It's a lot less stressful.
Thank you very much. Senator Stefano, you're not on our list, but we have to recognize you. Do you have anything you'd like to say to the group?
I want to hear what you have to say. This is government at the most local level, and I'm here to support your decisions. So I want to hear what you have to say and the issues that are before you, and then I'll let my support stay up and down. So I'm curious to see how you're moving forward with your issue, especially with this ordinance.
Well, welcome aboard, and thanks for showing up. We appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Okay, moving down the list, Luke from Morocco. Where's Luke? Luke, come on in. He's gonna give his report and then leave. He's in charge of putting cameras down at the playground, and we've been back and forth, and we finally got a proposal here from him, as soon as I find it here. It's $7,520 is your proposal, and would you explain what all that includes?
That will cover the playground area, which was the pavilion, the playground, and the concession stand as a start. And the system will support eight cameras. You're starting out with three, so if there's room for expansion down the road.
Now, there will be no Wi-Fi down there at this point, so I know there's other cameras like cheats and places like that, that the police come in to view something, and they have to actually look at the camera. That would be something to start out unless we get Wi-Fi down there. I'm assuming it would be in Brian's area, and if we would notice some vandalism, the police, the mayor, would then go down and review. And did you say this will re-tape every one month? How often will?
Depending, right now, we'll record probably for four months. Once you start adding cameras, it takes away the memory, so it might go out to a month and then start recording every episode.
So we thought, at least at this point, assuming council approves this, we would put the cameras in and see how it works without the added Wi-Fi. And then if we find the Wi-Fi would be necessary later on, that we could add that, and you're able to give us that capability, just?
Yeah, I think we'll be able to see it from the police video from the cameras.
Yeah.
Like they did with the lottery.
Okay. So at this point, I'd like to go around the table and ask council members, the mayor, police officers, do you have any questions of Luke? He was kind enough to come over, and he's gonna bolt out of here as soon as, but I appreciate you coming over on a nice night like this. So questions for Luke?
Does this have Zoom capability?
In a sense, you're not, it's not a PTZ camera, like you see on CSI. You're all gonna zoom in and read people's phones. You can get that, and it's expensive to go that route. These are a mid-range camera where they're not focused just here, they're focused more out in the distance, so it picks up movement out in the distance.
Karen?
How good does it pick up at night?
The IORs in the cameras reach 150 feet or so, and at that point, your pole lights down there, which I looked around when we were down there, there's lots of pole lights that should pick up more at that point.
Do you feel that they would be adequate enough to jump on what Timmy said as far as, we want these to be able to identify these crooks, these vandals, and that's the main reason we're trying to put them in?
When it comes to the cameras, it's hair mess, depending where they're standing, how far in and out. Like I said, at that point, if you feel there's a bad area that's not covered real well, you could always add another camera closer to that location to where things are happening. Usually when people see cameras, they stay away.
That's what we want. So any more questions of Luke? I think this is something that, you know, we want to do.
Did we order signs that say you're under video surveillance to help? Did we order those?
Well, I don't think we did that yet, but that would be, we certainly could get Tom on board. It should be posted, I agree.
You could have those are actively provided. Signs that says property under surveillance by the law.
If you would do that for us.
Aluminum sign, except for where Terry put it on the poles down there.
I think that's a.
Perfect.
And those are free.
Motioned? Anything else, Luke? Any questions? I'm no scientific guru with these electronics, but he has it very well itemized here, what we're getting for the $7,520, is that what it is?
Yes.
So I'm gonna ask for a motion that we go ahead and purchase these. Brian has a question? Yes, sir.
Before you do, Luke and I and Shane talk before this too. If this gets through, it will be okay for me to dig the ditch from the hole through the building for him, correct? There won't be an issue with that?
Of course, yeah, we'll have to help him out, get the wires. If you have to do a one call for that, I don't know, but yes. Right, we have to have it put in. Shane nods yes, so I'm gonna ask for a motion that we go ahead with this and move the meeting along. Thank you, Jenny.
And Clarence seconded.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. When are you gonna start? Tonight?
Yeah, I'll get out right now.
Okay.
We'll get things to work and get moving.
Okay. Just keep either myself or Shane in the loop. Probably the sooner the better, but I know these things maybe is hard to get sometimes.
We did it pretty quick once, now that you approved it, the paperwork's taken care of.
Okay. Do you need a down payment?
I believe that's on the proposal.
I didn't see it, but.
I think they do, 50% of the sign proposal.
We'll take care of it. We have to sign this then, I guess, so.
Yeah.
Okay, we'll take care of that. Thanks, Luke.
Yep, no problem.
Okay, Marty and Vincent is here to speak on the summer lunch program with my little great niece Emmy.
Yeah, we're hoping she'll be quiet. Anyway, for those that don't know me from this area, I'm Marty Vincent. In Myersdale, I'm Marty Ann, for the entire state, I'm Marty Vincent, other than here. But I came tonight for two reasons. One, thank you to the council for your support and allowing the summer food to use the Hall Ford Playground. We're pretty adaptable, but this summer, we have been able to use the pavilion twice a week. Mondays and Thursdays, we distribute meals to the, to this area from 5:00 to 6:00 p.m. And then the second thing, I came to sort of tell you a little bit about it. The summer food program has been in swing for a lot of years. I got into it eight years ago. After COVID, it became grab and go, where we just give meals out to kids or parents or grandparents. They come and pick it up, and they take it home. And then the kids have meals. Right now, our program gives 14 meals per week, so each kid gets seven breakfasts and seven lunches with it. It's a taxpayer-funded program, so all your taxpayer money is coming back into Somerset County. It is run or it's approved by the U.S. Department of Agriculture, but it is managed by the Pennsylvania Department of Education. Why, I don't know, but that's why, that's who I deal with in Harrisburg. I have a great team in Myersdale. To date, as of today, we have given out 9,420 meals to families in the area. Our last distribution is Thursday night, and we will certainly go over 10,000 meals to, you know, the, this community from June 16th till August 16th. Other than that, I can answer any questions. I'm lucky tonight, she didn't know it was on the agenda, but Sarah Jones is the site supervisor and has a fabulous team that, you know, works and that. One last thing I gotta say before you say anything is, we did this from 12 to 1, 11 to 12, I guess, four years, and we get maybe 35, 40, 45, something like that. Last year, Sarah kept hearing people say, you know what, I can't come get them because I'm working. I can't go and get them because I'm working. She moved it to 5:00 to 6:00 p.m., and we have gone from 40 to 60 kids to, what, 90 continuously. All summer long, we've given out 90 bundles of meals. You want to say anything, Sarah?
I just thank you, everybody here, for allowing us to do that. It's a great program, and like you said, I have a great team of people that helped me, and it's kind of just on our heart to do that, and I'll probably do it next year.
Yeah, all volunteers. I volunteer, you know, all my time. Yes.
I think you need to make people aware, too. This is a great group of people that do take care of that, but also, it's for anybody. It's not just goes on an income level or anything, it goes for any kids.
Yes. There are two sponsors in Somerset County. Movement Collective is the one that sponsors my group, and we have seven different sites, but yes, any person that has a child from 18 years to birth can come and pick up the meals. And it is free, there's no questions asked. It is truly your taxpayer dollars at work. The reason why it's free, though, I will say, is because Somerset County is considered, Commissioner still here? No. Oh, well, anyway, I was just, I'm gonna, he could probably, Somerset County is considered a rural poverty area. And so there are some places that we have, I just was talking about the summer food, I'm sorry, and I was just saying, I wanted you to be here so you didn't think I was slamming the county. We are considered a rural poverty area for the summer food program. And so every kid in Somerset County is eligible for it. If they would come, for every kid in Myersdale would come, Sarah, I think, would be, you know, yeah, but, you know.
You'd just be up in the numbers.
Yes. Yeah, but it is a great program. I got involved in it. We also, and I'll do a little spiel until next year, we also participate with Career Link. They have a first-time employment program that we hire students. I have seven students from three school districts, Shanksville, Somerset, and Rockwood, that are paid to come in, and they put all the food and the meals together for it. So it's a great opportunity, but thank you to the council for letting us use that, and I will, we'll be back next year. Patty, I'll reserve the playground, or Sarah will reserve it, so, but thank you. That's all I wanted.
Thank you, Marty Ann. Cody, you want to speak about the police air conditioning system, please? And look at this beautiful device we have above everybody's headset at 69 degrees.
Yeah, so I was putting it in basically Monday, just to cool this area off. It is a mini-split system, so it does have an indoor and outdoor unit. We kind of got rid of the window unit, so it'll be removed. With that being said, you guys can kind of tell how quiet it is currently. You can't hear it run, it's not very distracting. The police department currently has one of the big window shakers, right, Brian? That unit is an 18,000 BTU unit. With that being said, they have problems with it staying cool in there. Obviously, when those guys go in, they have to do, I'm sure, reports, things like that, any kind of meetings or questionings have to go on in that room. That kind of a window unit is obviously louder, they don't hold up very well. We've all probably purchased window units, we know that you get two to three years out of them if you're lucky. So one of the things me and Brian talked about was, you could always replace the window unit down there, get something with a dual inverter. It's similar to that, except it's made in a window unit, so how it works is it's able to modulate up and down to keep that room cool. They are made up to 24,000, which would cool that space. That would be a fix for one to five years, that system would work. You're gonna get probably five years out of it if you're lucky. They don't last long. More long-term, if you guys wanted to, the other option is there to install a mini-split. That one is 36,000 BTUs. The reason that we did 36 is because of people in the room. It can modulate down. We could sit the same unit in the police department, or we could go to the 24,000, which would do, based on my BTU calculations, enough to heat and cool that area. Any questions? Any questions?
What cost are you looking at down there?
I didn't do like a exact price. That one, we did, I donated my labor and paid some, one of my guys to come in and help me with that. So that, we just had material in it, which brought our cost, I think, to like 3,200. We would probably be, if we did the labor on that, you're probably around 4,200. I'd have to calculate the exact why or everything like that. But we did talk about getting rid of one of those windows. We could put the mini-split on that. But we also have to keep in mind, that one, we mounted higher up, so people couldn't do anything to it. The disconnect, everything's still serviceable. That unit's going to be over here. If we do mount it higher up, it's going to have to go in between like windows or something like that. So there's no great spot to kind of mount that where you just have a brick wall. And since it's at the front of the building, everyone is going to see it. So all that stuff would have to be kind of figured out on where you would want it, because the line set length is going to change, how much refrigerant I add per line set is going to change.
You know what? I think we're proud of our police that they, on these hot days, have to win that room down there, and it's not very right. It's pretty hot sometimes. I think we ought to think about maybe just putting the mini-split in and some, maybe not this big, Cody, the next size down, if you think we could get 10 years out of something like that. But we'd have to have a price. Go ahead, Karen.
If we get this community facility straight, we went after. We really do care about what this building's going to look like long-term. Is there any way the unit can be on the lower side of the building and still service the police department instead of on the front?
Yes, it could be out there. That would add, probably have probably a 50-foot line set. One question I did have, are those back doors open or closed? Like for the police department doors, are they open or closed? There's those two doors.
It just depends who goes down. At one time, they're closed. One time, they're standing open.
Okay.
You're talking about the interior doors?
Yeah, so that, that would play a factor, too, because we have to calculate for that amount of area. But we could get a line set that we could mount it down there. We could mount it high up and up so that it wouldn't be kind of a spot where people could mess with it.
Well, we're coming towards the end of the year here now. It is supposed to get warmer. According to what Channel 6 says, next week, there's more hot weather coming. Could you get us a firm price? And I hate to have another special meeting just for this. How could we move forward?
Could we make a motion that if it's.
5,000?
That's what I'm thinking.
If, if you can do it for $5,000 and anything over that, then we'd have to. And I think we'd be under the amount we'd have to bid with. Because you have to figure both job motions. Right. Well, are you, yes, Mr. Mayor?
Being that we're getting late in the year, we could probably hold off, if you would want to do that, and figure that in on next year's budgeting. Just another avenue.
That's up to you guys' recommendation. I mean, if you want to wait. I mean, I think council, you probably would get approval to move forward with it now. But that's up to you, Shane. You're, you're calling the shots, you and the officers.
Is it cold down there in the winter, too? Because these are both.
We have three electric heaters in Patty's office that's mounted throughout to try to keep it warm in there.
This might help with the winter, too.
Yeah, that, that would severely help heat, even at 24,000, would heat down to 5 degrees Fahrenheit. So it would be able to provide heat probably 90% of the year, if need be.
What do you think, Shane? I will spend it.
I'll take it tonight if you're going to put it in.
Is there anybody opposed to this? Karen had suggested about a 5,000 cap, so if it's going to go over that, then at that point, we'd have to get together. So would you put that in the form of a motion, Karen? And Jenny seconds it. All those in favor say aye? Opposed? Take it away, pal.
All right, I'll get it written out when I read it.
And we'll let Brian, if you need help, he'll be available. Yeah, okay. Thank you, Cody.
You're welcome.
Ed from PMCA. Good to see you, Ed. Always a pleasure.
Cody, do you want me to just await for my portion until the PMC report? And then if there's any questions on that report, I can answer that also.
I think you should go ahead and do it now. And then when you're done, you can go, unless you want to stay and listen to me talk.
All right. Well, the only reason I wanted to stop down here tonight is, we take care of your zoning and code enforcement. Well, we do a lot more in the zoning end of things. I get a lot of calls related to Airbnbs or short-term rentals. And right now, the borough doesn't have any ordinance that regulates that. So, you know, I don't have a whole lot to tell people, and people are just, you know, doing pretty much what they want, unless they decide they're going to put. I had a call, somebody wants to put a recreational vehicle in a residential area, another one, and it's near the bike trail, and they want to know how they can make that happen. Well, to do that, you got to go before the zoning hearing board, and you got to get a variance. And there's the costs involved in that, and we can work through those issues. But I get more and more of these calls, and I don't, I don't have a really good answer for folks. So what I'm proposing is, the council may want to consider adopting an ordinance regarding regulating these short-term rentals. And I sent to Patty late today and to the solicitor some examples. A lot of this is done out in eastern Pennsylvania, and we have one community in Somerset that just adopted it in January of this year. What that requires is that a permit be issued by the borough for any Airbnb. It's good for a year, and then you can renew it. And this community in Somerset County only allows 35 in their municipality. So if you're 36, you go on a waiting list until somebody drops out, then you can add in to that facility. The good thing about this is it can be inspected at any time, and there are regulations requiring like fire extinguishers, smoke detectors, GFCIs, regulating parking, regulating noise. It's pretty in-depth. All I want you to do is to consider taking a look at what I've sent. I de-identified the one for Somerset County. I gave an example of one that's out east, and there's really, it's de-identified also. Take a look at that, and maybe you all folks can consider it, and it would give some regulatory capabilities that the borough currently doesn't have. The other thing that this municipality in Somerset is doing, the inspections aren't done by PMCA. They're done by the local fire department. So they select a fire inspector from the local fire department to go in and check these. And it can be random, but, you know, and if there's a complaint lodged against the individual for failure to comply with whatever, parking, noise, et cetera, then PMCA gets involved and we do the enforcement side of it. But other than that, that's what I wanted to present to you all tonight. I don't have copies, but again, Patty has it and the solicitor has it. If she could get those to the members.
We're going to have one other issue that's further down on the agenda, just so you have a heads up. So I was at the patient advisory board meeting at the hospital last week and got pulled aside by their contractor up there. The FAA has been to town, and they looked at the helipad at the hospital. And they would like, and they have prepared an ordinance for Myersdale, which I'm going to have emailed to me for our September meeting. But their flight path comes into the hospital over Large Street and Keystone Street, and then they land, and then they go out this way. They would like, not that it's probably going to be an issue. There's probably not going to be a four-story building built on Keystone or Large Street, but they would still like us to pass the ordinance, which will affect zoning. So we need to do that on behalf of the hospital, so that they're in compliance with the FAA. So more to come on that.
So what you're telling me is that they're going to need a variance from the current zoning to do, to install this.
No, it's there.
It's there.
It's there.
Okay.
They will just need to update our zoning in those areas so that we would never let a building over a certain height in their flight path. And they would be open to changing their flight path if it was a real big issue.
Okay.
But they would like us to adopt it.
That's fine. When that happens, please send it to us so we have it on file. We can manage it for you all. Okay? That's all I have.
Ed, thanks. Always a pleasure.
All right, thank you.
Stay as long as you want, but don't feel badly.
You've been a lot of business. Take care.
Okay, see you, Ed.
Take care.
Yes, sir. Jeff Christner. Where's Jeff? Take it away.
I don't know, I'm updating on the water bowl system, but hopefully next month I'll have something.
Okay, well, that was quick. Thank you, Jeff. Michael Mishler would like to put a time capsule in the park.
Here, Bill, I received permission from the board to put it at the monument. Since then, I've looked at it. I feel the monument is getting too busy. I feel that this would take away from the monument. So I would like to place it somewhere. I have not decided where, but up at the park. It's going to be a three-foot time capsule, three-foot hole. On top of that, after we fill it in, I'm going to have a, more than likely, a bronze plaque at ground level. So it can be mowed over.
So this really wouldn't be that noticeable. It's just, it's flat, like, like a.
I'm going to make a mess, dig in the hole, and then once we close it up, you're going to have a ground-level plaque.
For 50 years.
For 50 years. So there's, there's really, there's nothing to see other than the plaque stating what is there.
I happen to be at the 150th committee. Jenny was there. And I think, are you working with them, or are you working separate from that committee?
This is my wife's and my donation to the 150th.
So you're part of the committee, though?
Yes.
And I think they were supportive of it at the meeting. So I guess that's what, it's just, it's just something that they're putting newspapers in there and other, maybe you can.
I actually have just, I'm getting ready to do a whole lot of digital media pictures. The library is going to download a whole bunch of stuff. I just purchased waterproof, vibration-proof, shock-proof flash drives that are supposed to be long-term. I'm going to do it in triplicate, put three separate flash drives in there. Hopefully, one will make it with all our digital media on there, including the 150th book. It will be on, on there digitally.
I mean, I think we should do this. It's a special thing. It's not going to be really noticeable. But then the other end of the coin, I think we have to be a little bit careful. That Patty's going to agree with this, that we don't just junk up the park, you know? Not saying that you're doing that. But I think, I was at the meeting, the 150th. Let's ask him some questions, and I would certainly ask council to make a motion to allow them to move forward with it. But council members, any questions first? If there's no questions, we could have a motion or either vote it up or vote it down. Karen?
I just want to thank him and his wife for all the efforts they've put into everything the past year and doing this for the community. It's much appreciated.
Thank you.
Another thing, thank you also for all the help, too, at the 150th. But this is something that's going to be like up near the tree line or somewhere that it's not, we're not putting it in the middle of the park.
That is, I did not know if this is approved, if you have a specific location you want it. That I'm open to whatever, whatever you feel would look best, be best.
I'm just saying, if there's a concern of.
Well, the tree line, the tree line may be a problem because of roots.
Roots, oh, okay.
I was thinking some place around the gazebo, maybe down on the upper portion of the gazebo, someplace that you could see it, people walking with the car shows and stuff. It would be visible, but it would be away from those trees and stuff, and it would be maybe protected a little bit. But let's get into that later.
Then there's no having to decide.
Right, just that you could maybe work together. Brian's pretty savvy at coming up with stuff like that. If the borough's going to have to help with this, I don't know. But is there a motion? Jenny? Clarence? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Unanimous?
Thank you.
Okay. Scott Kelly, is he here with equipment installation? Scott Kelly?
Scott's not here, but I can talk, I can speak for him. Earlier this year, you guys had presented a plan about putting a bagging cage, fully put a bagging cage down at the ball field, and we met with Terry to talk about utility conflicts, things like that. They've changed kind of the layout and the design, so we don't affect any of the utilities. And we just presented a plan of where they want to put it. It's now going to be an above-ground structure. It'll be a concrete pad on top of the ground. And the poles be removal, so after baseball season, it'll just be a pad once it's constructed. And then they're usually thinking of putting the poles back in and then they would put up. So the plan shows about the proximity location, it won't impact the sewer water lines and things like that, so. It's just to modify what was discussed earlier this year.
Do we need a motion for that?
Yeah.
Any questions? You know, we trust you guys. This is for the Little League field, right? I mean, good gosh, you're the, who wants to use it primarily, so. Could we have a motion to allow, they've always been respectful of the area before. Could we have a motion to let them go ahead with this plan? Terry makes a motion. Clarence? Karen seconded. All those in favor say aye? Unanimous. Thank you. Public comment. Now, what we're going to do, we're going to have public comment. So if you have anything to say about the side-by-side ordinance, say it now. As soon as public comment is over, we're going to vote on the ordinance. So that way, those of you who want to get out can get out. You're welcome to stay. So, but we're going to do public comment right now. And you have each person that has five minutes. Go. Sarah?
I just want to know exactly what this ordinance is. There's a lot of rumor running around, and people don't know. I mean, I know there are a lot of people opposed to it. There are a lot of people for it. But, I mean, what is the deal? That's really what I want to know.
It allows for, it'd be what, registered, insured ATVs. I believe it requires helmets. Yeah, the safety provisions. It's mainly safety requirements, and they would be allowed to operate on any, this, this ordinance is any borough-owned road.
Any borough road?
Yes.
Is there any other type of vehicle in that ordinance, other than ATV?
ATVs will include not only side-by-side.
Right.
Everybody thinks $25,000 side-by-side. No. You've got three-wheelers? You've got four-wheelers?
Licenses?
Well, they both have licenses, but I'm saying, you're going to have, you can have three-wheelers, which is rare, but you're going to have four-wheelers, side-by-sides, and UTVs. So it won't all be just, and I'm not for it. I got no problem. But just so everybody knows.
Here's a, I don't, there's a copy. You can pass it around. That's the copy that was properly advertised, so.
I mean, I could be wrong, but I mean, I've heard the same a lot, so who knows?
And you have to be 16 to operate. There's a state law that, you know, we won't have liability. Pat might be able to speak to that. Is it, Timmy, you know, is it section 75 or something?
Title 75.
Now, where does snowmobile fall in here? There's snowmobile on here.
Right. There always, when we grew up, there were streets in town that you could ride.
Actually, up until the 70s, I think, there was an ordinance.
Okay. My next question is, who's going to enforce all this?
Okay, so that's all set up. Brian's here. You want to answer some questions?
Yeah, sure.
Yeah. So I.
I want to, hold on. I'm going to stop this. Okay, Sarah has five minutes. So any questions you ask, when Brian finishes, that's into your five minutes. Because we can't, because we've been through a lot of this already. So at five minutes, I'll stop it, and then we ask her somebody else. So you have about two and a half minutes of your time yet, Sarah. So Brian, take it away.
Well, if we were looking at this thing, you're going to have to have, the vehicle's going to have to be registered, insured, the operator's going to have to have a valid Pennsylvania driver's license.
Why give that?
Okay. There are, I mean, you've got the Pennsylvania vehicle code that they have to follow, okay? So if people are ripping and tearing, guess what? You're breaking the law, and the police will cite them. So, if people are ripping and tearing, guess what, you're breaking the law, and the police will cite them.
Okay, okay.
Okay.
I mean, they're not here very much, so, that's, when the ripping and the rock, you know, starts, I mean, how many hours...
Well, maybe, maybe if, and, you know, just hypothetically, maybe if this opens, maybe if this opens up, and it generates more income for, for the borough, the borough will be able to go back to the days when they had a full-time police department.
Maybe.
I mean, we can't look here.
Well, I'm just asking the questions.
Okay, and I'm just explaining where our such, where, where our stance is with this. This, this is a situation where, you know, I looked at this, and I'm, this is an opportunity for the borough. You know, if the borough doesn't wanna take that opportunity, I'm fine with that. You know, we'll, we'll go around. And if it's a situation where nobody in the, in the county wants to do it, then we'll gladly fade away, and I'll try to develop another idea to where we can bring in some money into this county, because we are a dying county. And to me, this was low-hanging fruit.
Okay.
Sarah, you still, your timer's still running, you have a minute and fifteen seconds.
I, one other thing.
Let's, Sarah?
Well, I think it might help her with the enforcement, so...
I mean, where's the money gonna come from?
So, they have to pay for an annual fee for the permit to the county. We will get half of that money, and the other half will go towards enforcement.
All right, now, my question is, okay, too, we'll get half of the money from the whole county? Or just the people that hear, or what, I mean, where, I mean, the people who have the side-by-sides and all the deals, if they register them and they live here, we get half of that money?
The, the permit, the permit that they, that they're be purchasing.
Okay.
Okay.
But it wouldn't, if you've got it all over the county, and they're purchasing a permit, and you've got a trail running through Rockwood or something, how are they, are they gonna get half?
We're gonna be divvying up the money throughout, throughout the whole system.
Okay.
And the way we're kinda looking at it is, is we're gonna kinda break it down for, per, per mile, per tenth of a mile, whatever it is. So that, so that if Myersdale Borough gives us, you know, three miles of roadway, they're gonna get, you know, whatever we decide it is, a portion of that, that permit is gonna go to that. Then, you gotta look at all the other stuff that it's gonna generate, all the...
Okay, Sarah's, thank you, everyone. Sarah's time's up, public comment. We'll do Beth, and then Pat, and then the fellow back there. So, five minutes, Beth, go.
I just wanted to ask a question, and, and Mr. Fuhrman, I believe you're a Berlin resident?
Brother's hometown.
Yeah. Berlin has the ordinance already, right?
Correct.
Can you expand upon what problems they may have faced?
Well, the, the officers that I've spoken with, the borough council members that I've spoken with, it's, it's been fine. I mean, you know, they do have increased traffic, you know, with the ATVs, but, you know, it, it, it hasn't been anything out of the ordinary. There, there, there's been...
Can you tell us why they adopted that ordinance, what was, what was the benefit?
I, I think a lot of the benefit was that people were doing this anyway. And now, we, they've given them a way to traverse the town in a legal means. And what they've seen is they've actually seen kinda like a, a drop in the speed, because people weren't rushing up to get their ice cream, and then rushing back home. But as far as the, the individuals that I've spoken with, it's been a positive.
How long have they had you?
Oh, geez.
Some time for the last year.
Okay.
Have you had any negative comments?
I haven't heard anything.
Are there any other towns or counties except for Berlin?
Uh, Berlin's the only one that I know of right now, actually.
But a bunch of townships around us.
Yeah, a bunch of, a bunch of towns, you know, Stony Creek's had them, Shade's been open for a while, Ogle's been open for a while, I believe Southampton, Elklick, Greenville, yeah.
Have you seen a lot of the side-by-sides in Berlin? Have you seen a lot of activity?
You, you, yeah, when you drive through town, generally, you'll see one or two. And there's been times where, you know, the, the ice cream station up there on the Upper Diamond, you know, there's been times you might see a dozen side-by-sides sitting, you know, parked along the street or in their parking lot.
I think, I think the biggest thing is, people are having this perception that it's not gonna be your licensed, legal driver's license kind of people that are gonna be running. We're looking at the, the Darrell kids who are, you know, illegally driving their side-by-sides or four-wheelers, you know? And, and I've seen it, down on the bottom where the restaurant is, there's kids down there all the time doing that, you know? And I always just think, I don't wanna see that happen, but I also wanna see the benefit of what the business owners are gonna experience as a result of it. So, I'm kinda sitting in the middle of this right now, where I wanna see the benefit to the, to the town, but I don't wanna see the drawback of having kids do that.
Well, hey, and you know, hey, and, you know, I'm, I'm county commissioner. You know, the whole county are, are my constituents. The last thing I wanna do is have a negative effect on my constituents. You know, I want this to be a positive, you know? What outweighs, you know, are we worried about the one percent?
Yeah.
Or are we worried about the ninety, or are we worried about the ninety percent, the ten, eighty, twenty, whatever the case is? You know, we gotta look at the overall benefit here, and that's, like I said, whenever I looked at this, and I went and visited Potter County, I actually have a phone call into the state police station commander in Potter County, where I wanna get their stats. I wanna see what the accidents are, I wanna see what the DUIs are, I wanna see what the citations are, because they've had that system up there for three years. But, having ridden up there, I rode with one of the county commissioners, I rode with the DCNR individual, and some township supervisors, and all of them have said that it's been a positive for the county.
I feel that it will make the kind of our lead, but I just wanted to hear some of the drawback.
If it was a negative, I wouldn't be pursuing it.
You done?
I'm good.
Pat, go.
Okay, my only concern has been, oh, this is for the mayor and the police. And our mayor's doing a terrific job, I think he's really a good mayor for this town, is that, when I, I have been president of the cemetery for seven years, and we had a real problem with ATVs ripping through the cemetery. The neighbors were calling me constantly, the people that lived out there. So, my concern, I know they're only supposed to ride on public tideways, but my concern would be that the police would keep a diligent eye on the cemetery to make sure that none are going up there and riding through that, because that's sacred ground.
No, and I agree, and to Mr. Fuhrman's point, I think that there's a lot of that that has taken place in the past because it has been illegal. And I think that making it legal, I'm not saying that all of that will disappear, don't get me wrong, but I'm expecting that some of that will go away, being that they can ride the streets now in a, we're hoping a...
Well, most of that was, were kids under, you know, they weren't on the type of drivers.
Right, but we, I mean, I don't wanna speak for chief here, but I'm assuming that we wouldn't have a problem going up there.
Thank you, Sean.
It's part of that, it's part of...
Just part of it.
It's part of it.
Did you finish, anything else, Pat?
No.
Somebody in the back wanted to, yes, sir. You have five minutes, go.
All right, I'm gonna, real, give you a minute just to introduce myself. Most of you don't know me, I'm Brian Burkinow, as of July, I am the president of Myersdale Area Merchants Association. So, speaking on that behalf, we've had Chad Sines come out and discuss the proposal and everything. So, the Myersdale Area Merchants Association, a larger percentage does support this proposal as it's been addressed. We do have a small amount who do not support it, as they're due to lack of understanding or those concerns of noise and all those things. I do have two letters written from local merchants, I'm gonna read real quick, I can get this done in under five minutes. One is from Michael and Katie Rogen, they could not be here tonight, and then the second one will be from Alyssa Blocker and Thomas Dyer. Dear borough council members, we are writing today to express our support for a proposed side-by-side trail that would have a stopping point in Myersdale. As most of you know, Mike was born and raised in Myersdale, his family operated a small business that provided meat products to a lot of businesses in town. George and Mary, Ellis at the White House, Ethel Adonkis, and Fran at Fran's Bar were among his most loyal customers and remain still in operation today. The busy with restaurants work letter was from Mike's family business. At the last meeting, a letter was read from the White House restaurant that stated their business increased by more than fifty percent for a gap trail bike season. It was their expectation that the proposed side-by-side trail would produce an even greater increase in business, and yet, the vote was not unanimous. It is our, it is our opinion, and this is Mike and Katie Rogen, it is our opinion that a no vote tonight is a vote against most small businesses in Myersdale. It is a vote to keep some fronts empty, it is a vote to keep things status quo versus progressing forward. We understand this, this will take work to ensure it succeeds, and we are confident it can be accomplished with great leadership. Respectfully, Myersdale should not miss out on this amazing opportunity, one regards Michael and Katie Rogen. Second, from Alyssa Blocker, dear mayor, Shane Smith, and borough council, I am able to attend the second of these meetings for the approval of the ordinance of ATVs being allowed on borough roads. I will, however, again, voice my support of this bill passing. Like many other merchants, out-of-town visitors are an important part of helping me stay open. While I am truly blessed that my local customers are exactly into my business, it is visitors' business in the summer months that help me get through the slower winter months with higher bills for heating, et cetera. Allowing ATVs and side-by-sides to be able to ride on borough routes and come to my business to keep or stay has the potential to be a huge benefit for me and other businesses like mine. Additionally, the riding season of ATVs is a bit longer than that of the cyclists on the gap, giving us potentially longer tourism seasons and extending our bumper month, bumper months longer. Similar to the boom of business from the gap, I would hope Myersdale will again shine and be a great stop for ATV enthusiasts, and for a pet, for a potential for business benefit of ATVs in town with boost, boost local businesses and again bring new businesses to town. In turn, we are lucky that most of our community businesses then support so many of our towns' activities, such as support of library, festival, county fair, youth sports, school clubs, the band, adult leagues, and she mentioned a bunch here, Tom, I'm not gonna mention all of them, and many other charitable events all year long. Bigger business allows me and main businesses in town to do, to donate bigger as well. So, again, the Myersdale Area Merchants Association, for a large percentage, does support the initiatives of like the Handys in Arizona. And as the president, happy to meet all you, and looking forward to working with you. Thank you.
And you did another four minutes.
Sorry.
Public comment, ready, go.
I'm gonna talk to this people there, and Brian is, we were in Berlin earlier weekend. We was there, we went to the ice cream station, there was twenty people and ten machines. We probably dropped four hundred fifty to five hundred dollars in cash in Berlin on Sunday. And anybody who thinks we're doing something bad, I'd like you to come along, go for a ride, tell me what we're doing so bad.
You finished?
Yep.
Public comment. Yes, ma'am?
I'm just, I'm just saying, as a business owner in Myersdale, I'd, I'd like them to come through. Because I, I don't wanna open up any more businesses in Myersdale without getting any more support from them. Because it, it is bad.
Finished?
Yep.
Public comment. Going once, twice, public comment is now over. Could I please have a motion that we approve ordinance number four, four, five, which is the side-by-side ordinance, and then we'll do a roll call vote. Karen makes the motion, Ginny seconded it, Patty the roll call.
Mr. Ackerman?
Yes.
Mr. Baier?
Yes.
Mr. Baker?
Yes.
Mrs. Nagy?
Yes.
Mr. Irwin?
No.
Mr., or Mrs. Canary?
Yes.
Mr. Smith? He's, oh, he's not here.
Okay, so, you passed? That's it? Public comment is over. If you wanna stay on, we're gonna move on with the rest of the meeting. If you're here for the ATVs, you're welcome to leave, you can stay all night if you want. Or till we turn out the lights. Those that are leaving, we'll give you a minute to clear the room. Okay, girls, we have a lot, everybody, order. We'd like you to stay as long as you want, if you're ready to leave. We are gonna move on with the meeting, and we want order in here now, 'cause we have, have other things going on. I wanna get that guy to shut up.
You know, Mayor, in times of crisis, you have to take the...
Okay, now, we'll move on, President's report. I would like to make some remarks about public comment. Public comment is now over, okay? When public comment is going on, we wanna hear everything the community members wanna say. And I actually like to engage back and forth. We don't have to answer questions, but I've always made it a practice to engage. But council members have been complaining, the mayor and I have discussed this, public comment is over. So, the ones that are sitting up here have been elected, the mayor and the council, to make the decisions for this community moving forward. So, at this point, if you have a question or a comment, write it down, call Patty tomorrow morning, and say, Patty, I'd like to discuss this, I'd like to discuss that. And just like tonight, you'll have five minutes to speak at public comment. But this, going back and forth, it's disruptive to the meeting, it lengthens the meeting. And like I say, I'm, I'm just saying what, the mayor and I have discussed it, and we hope that you'll respect our request and wishes now that public comment is over. So, that's my report, Mr. Mayor.
I have a quick report also, Mr. President. In July, we had twenty-one calls to service. We had some criminal trespass, disorderly conducts, harassment, things of those nature. The check from District Court sixteen dash three dash zero six will be one sixty-six point nine three. That is my report, Mr. President.
Thank you, sir. Any questions of our mayor? Okay, junior council report, not here. Kevin Broadwater, E, emergency management is not here. Engineer Kevin?
I thought I saw Kevin here.
Kevin, you have, nope, he's not here. Mr. Solicitor, take it away.
May we use your vision chair?
Thank you. Thank you.
Excuse me, Jeff, were you gonna bring up that, the signing of the, the map or whatever?
Um, actually, I have, I have that under the Vietnam-Korean Memorial. Motion to allow me to sign, and then Mark needs to provide, so we'll be coming to that.
I was gonna bring that up at the beginning, if we could do that.
We're gonna do it now, sure, okay.
So, the, there's two parts to the Vietnam Memorial subdivision. The first part is, I spoke with the solicitor for the school district. They will sign to be removed as a reversionary interest from this building, but they will not do so until that memorial is subdivided. So, they, they want the board, the memorial to go through and to be subdivided and to flourish, but they will, they will sign. That being said, to the best of my knowledge, I talked to the solicitor, they support that subdivision. They will be signing off on the subdivision if they haven't already. And there should be no issues or hiccups with getting that approved. We do need a motion to authorize the president to sign the subdivision plan.
Is there a motion? Thank you, Ron and Clarence, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous? And that'll, they'll need a copy of that in the minutes. You know, Kevin or Chad or somebody will, the, well, it's the planning committee will need to see that in the minutes that we approve that.
Also, the paving contract, that the paving company that conducted the paving, I believe they went over the contract amount of approximately ten thousand dollars. There are two provisions in the contract that would require them, when they got to the point of going over that amount, that they needed to come to the borough. They were not specifically authorized to complete any work more than that amount. So, quite frankly, we are in position that if, if council... So quite frankly, we are in position that if council does not want to pay the $10,000 overage, they do not have to. You should keep in mind that Keystone Lime was within, I believe, $3,000 as the next bidder. So I would strongly suggest that council take no action and does not pay that overage.
I think we all agree. So then you're saying if we don't have to pay it, we're not going to pay it. There's no motion needed, we're just going to pay it.
Correct.
Will you notify them and write it?
I think we should.
Yes, I can do that.
Will you do that, Mark?
Yes. As to?
Like the foreman, the gentleman that I spoke to?
Yeah, sure, I'll get this from you then. On Grant Street, as many of you know, we've been trying to sell the Grant Street property. I'm working with PennDOT to hopefully I get the retaining wall. If you'll notice, the retaining wall that is along 219, Business 219, it's kind of listing towards the roadway. I'm hopeful that PennDOT will take ownership of that wall. That's a WPA wall, it was installed during the Great Depression. So it encompasses more than one property. So I'm hopeful that they will go ahead and do that. Also, I have sent out today the samples of social media policies. The sample for employees is fairly similar to the one that Patty had sent out last, I believe, October. I also believe the council needs to adopt a policy that involves the elected and appointed officials. And the whole purpose of that is to not only keep, it protects the employees and the officials, but it also, it prevents employees and officials from taking any position that is contrary to the council. You are not, you would not be permitted to put your own personal views or things like that and post them. And of course, it covers the normal non-harassing, nonviolent, those kinds of things. But I would ask for you to take a look at that and possibly we could discuss that in our next regular meeting. So we really should have adopted that probably before. We had the website up and the Facebook, but now's a good time to do it. So let me think of the next one. Oh, and Shane, if we can get those, if we could get the patrolmen to sign the handbooks when we get these new body cams would be good. It has a body cam policy. It is the up to date body cam policy. So if you have any questions or anything on that, let me know. The, the big issue that I spent time on is the ARPD COVID funds. It gets fairly complicated when you dig into it. I know that we have to have those designated by December 31st of this year. The revenue loss replacement, if you really dig into that, I know that we currently have that in that category. We have to be able to prove through the Treasury Department calculation that revenue loss. Now, mind you, I don't believe that they're policing that, but in good faith, we need to be careful how much that we attribute. The largest area that this money would qualify would be related to infrastructure, but it gets complicated in that it needs to be for health and/or recreation of the community. I have seen examples that I've read about in the last few days that would involve improvements to this building, but I think improvements need to benefit the health and the recreation of the actual community itself. A lot of groups have used those for playgrounds. They've used those for alternative exercises and just a whole abundance of things. But it needs to be that kind of community oriented. It would be possible to designate some of those funds towards windows and improvements in this building, but in reading all the information that goes into this that I could find, I believe that it would be better as a fiduciary of those funds for council to maybe find several projects to designate. One, quite frankly, and I don't know if you've thought about it, transportation is a part of that. One might be to consider using part of those funds to establish or to finalize the alley that we had discussed for Myers Avenue as part of the funding. The other part is, Karen had brought up several meetings ago, whether or not it could be used for a match for grants. It can be used for federal grant matches, but it can be used for state grant matches. It also can be used for like the decorations and that kind of stuff. So the whole idea of that money is to try to inspire, lift up, and motivate the residents of the community.
If we would decide that we wanted to then just use the money and upgrade the playground, $187,000 worth of, I mean, fix our playground, extend the size of it for the kids, new rides and things like that, would that be acceptable?
Although that is acceptable, yes.
I mean, that might be something if you don't feel comfortable.
Storm, yeah, the storm. If you put it towards sewer water or storm drainage or broadband, yes.
Because we don't, we don't manage water and sewer, but we have storm issues.
And it wouldn't be a bad idea to put some of that towards storm because as you know, every time we have rainfall events, we have numerous streets that are.
Well, if you look over here coming out of Take Six, like where the alley comes down, I guess that'd be Clay Street at, I mean, there's no water going in that big quarter. It's pavement almost all the way up. Yeah. So, I mean, we have a lot of flooding on streets. That's right on, you know, on Main Street. There's lots of manholes that are down in. I mean, we have a lot of those issues.
Excuse me.
Maybe we could divide.
Which I think is what they would actually prefer to try to cover.
Cover the front end, yes.
Are these like permanent projects or, I'm speaking from the aspect of community events?
They, they, they don't have to be permanent in the sense that they're reoccurring, but what they're trying to get through to any group that has received these funds is that they shouldn't create anything that will have an ongoing cost that this money won't cover in the future. So if they are things that can be budgeted and are able to continue to be funded regularly without seeking funds like this in the future, because they probably won't exist, yes, that is, that is okay, yes. And I would add that they, they do not want programs created that are either going to fill a deficit from a tax reduction or programs that will require a known tax increase in the reasonably foreseeable future to cover these programs in the future.
Would that cover like the alley up there by Ron and Clarence?
Yeah, that would fall to the, I believe that would fall to the transportation part.
So you could basically use that to blacktop that street?
Or other one, yeah.
Or through the alley, whatever, instead of Millings, if you per se wanted to do that. I think that would be a good idea for these guys, to use some of that to pave that up through there, and then it could be plowed and maintained in the wintertime.
Yeah, no, that is.
It's a thought.
No, that is an option.
Well, how do we go about that, Brian? Bid that out? Do you have to bid it out and see if we can get it done before winter?
I would imagine.
It doesn't have to be done till the end of 2026.
Correct. I'm just thinking though for their, that they'd like to get, to be able to replow this winter. But we could.
I mean, if it can't be done by the end of the year, we're going to take Millings up and I'll level that all back up, roll it in with a roller and, you know, get it as good as we can get it for winter.
The funds need to be designated by the end of this year. If, if council deviates from what those funds are designated for, it has to be a reasonable deviation. It can't be a 180 degree change. So.
What would you estimate it would cost to pave that, Terry?
What did we have in the whole counter on 170,000?
Yeah.
I don't know, 60,000, I don't know.
I'd take 50, 60.
Well, I think that would be a good start to utilize it for you.
It needs to be 10 feet wide. It doesn't need to be anything spectacular.
Something we can get up and down.
Well, you know what, why don't we mark that down, Patty, as at least one baby step here, and we can come up with some other projects.
The storm, the storm, I have an interest in. Tom, would you know an engineer that could help us on like our storm system, do an evaluation and see some of the major project areas that, would you know somebody? Okay.
We could maybe come up with however many projects, pick a couple, their road, and then maybe upgrade our playground. That would be something that people would actually notice we're doing something for the community. Better swings, better, more rides down there, more castles to climb on. So would council be okay with maybe earmarking those three items, at least for now? We can think about it and then revisit this next month? Could we have a motion then to at least move forward with those three items? Patty, you got them?
I make a motion.
Okay, Terry seconds it. All those in favor say aye. Opposed? That's unanimous. Anything else, though, Greg?
No, the other, the other two things I have, we'll deal with both in executive session.
Okay. Code enforcement, Ed Left. The committee reports, municipal authority, how's our water, Terry?
Can we wash our cars yet? Not yet. It was down about four and a half feet. The last rain we got, it came up a foot and a half, the two feet. So I mean, it's holding its own, but it's still, we're not out of the woods yet.
I had two people, just the one separately in the office, both said they had rain gauges and we got four inches of rain. Does that sound right? Yep, that's what I was told, huh?
It's about right.
So that was a big help. Anything else on the municipal authority? Do we have any MMA members in here?
Barry?
Barry, yeah, I just looked at him. What's going on down there, Barry?
I can't, no. Got nothing.
Okay. If I decided midnight I'm going to wash my car, will you be out watching for it?
I'm coming down your street, mine need washed too.
Only kidding, folks. Okay, thanks, that's the MMA. Street foreman, Brian?
The only real thing I have is right now we have street signs laying in our shop. Tom purchased those. I talked to Terry last week. I put a one call in for the street signs. My legal start date is, what is today? Today was actually my legal start date, to start installing those signs. I know we have a basin that goes uptown. So what I'm looking at is, I'm going to be by myself next week. JR's taken a whole week off. So basically, I'll be on my own. My son will be with me, but he's limited to what he can do with Tableland. So this week, what I'm looking at is trying to get those street signs knocked out, get them out of the way, JR gets back, put a one call in, and get the basin in. That's, that's how it's going to have to work.
Is everybody okay with that? Terry, you're head of street, you comfortable with that?
Yeah.
So we'll be seeing some signs up?
I'm going to start.
It's supposed to be a nice, nice week.
If that's okay and good Lord willing, we don't get anything else going on.
Yeah.
Rain's done, that's out of the way. We had some other stuff, we helped with the installation of that. So it's, it should be started tomorrow. We should get those signs and hopefully we'll get them all done tomorrow from one end to the other. So that'll be done and then we can move on with other things.
Anything else?
Oh, there is one thing. As soon as Brian decides the final route, then we have to give the final side by side route map to DCNR and highlight the route. And then they will provide all the signs for the borough where we're regulated to put them up. We just have to provide the posts. So that's probably going to come this fall. But we can get the signs for free.
Anything else, Brian?
I did see on the agenda under unfinished, the tree down at the bottom at our shed, you can mix that for now. They, he's not going to worry about it, he doesn't have time to mess with it, so.
I think it's a nice tree, I mean, I.
I mean, I'm not.
It's a beautiful, it would be a shame to take it, okay, I'm glad to hear that. Okay, good. Did anybody besides Karen and I and Terry look at it? I mean, it looks healthy to me.
I think there's a big wind laying there right now if we're involved.
Really? Well, we'll take that off the agenda then, Patty, for now. When we get to it, we'll just bypass it. Okay, I'm going to go fast here, stop me. Myersdale Area Merchants Mama, Public Library, Myersdale Community Events.
That's me. We're working on a back to school program for, really during school. For September, we would like to do a coloring contest and then pick winners and have them win bike helmets. So that's September. October, we're working on the Halloween parade and bonfire with the school. So that's all in the process of getting together. Then we have light up night, tentatively scheduled as November 30th. We're working with the festival because they are thinking of doing an old time Christmas and we will have the one like we did last year up here. So we got lots going on.
For our budget, and I'm tired of this back and forth arguing about money. Could you come up with like a list of your items that you do every year and what they cost? And give, like, is it $15,000? Is it, is it $20,000?
We sent that to you last week in an Excel spreadsheet.
I didn't, I didn't get it. But if you have it, the time to, thank you. The time to discuss it would be at our budget committee. And then we can kind of all get together and see how everybody feels about moving forward with next year once we make the budget and see that there's adequate money available, what event you want to do. And like I say, if I didn't get that, I don't know where it is.
I copied you guys, did you get that?
If I did, there's so many things coming through.
Yeah, I just, the.
Could you resent it?
The outreach from the community has been very positive from, from all the activities throughout the year and the.
And I think we want to discuss this.
Right.
So there's money there and they're not, everybody, they don't have the money, we're good. Let's just see what you need. I mean, our expenses or our finances are, I think, good enough. But if you have that exactly, each event you're going to do and the estimated cost, then we can sit down and all of us hammer it out and then put it in the budget. Is that fair enough?
That's fair enough.
Anything else?
No.
That's okay, Renaissance? Standing committees. Let's just go around the table, except for when we get to Terry, he'll talk about the Eighth and Salisbury Stop Sign. So instead of the committee reports, Clarence, anything? Ginny, anything other than what you reported on?
No, but I do have a question. I'm glad to talk to Brian to see how summer helped with. Everything go okay with?
I still have my son, the other one's done.
He's done?
It was finished.
Okay, okay, just, just curious, everything went good?
Ronnie?
No.
I have nothing, Karen?
We sent Mark the job descriptions today, so that's coming along.
Yep.
Terry, I know we want to discuss Davy Stop Sign.
Yeah, we had a resident on Salisbury Street. He was wondering if there was any possible way we could put a four way stop sign in Salisbury and Eighth Avenue like we did down, you know, Fourth Street, Fourth Avenue. So I said I'd bring it up at the meeting and see what council had to say. I mean, I'm not opposed to it.
We do that by resolution, so.
I mean, I hate to, well, I live out there and I know, I don't notice it too much, but I hear my neighbors complaining a lot about fast moving traffic. They stop at the Sun and Fourth Street and then take off. Where the, if, and we seem to think, if you look at, maybe Timmy's input would be appropriate or appreciated, but it seems like that Eighth Street would be, we'd be dividing Salisbury Street into thirds and the signs would be more noticeable there, I think, at Eighth Street, where Corky Schaefer lives and it just seems like it would be a good, and Davy Loppers.
Break it up more.
So, um, could we have a motion then to move forward on that?
We vote to advertise it tonight, and you would vote on the resolution next month.
Karen and Terry, all those in favor say aye. Opposed? Unanimous. So guide us through that, uh, you, you'll do the resolution and then give it, okay. Anything else, Terry? Mr. Mayor, do you have anything else?
No, sir.
Timmy, what do you have to say for it?
I would like to thank you, Trudy. We've been getting a lot of people, I know a couple, uh, meetings ago, I asked if you see things, you don't necessarily have to put your name on it, but drop information into our mailbox down there. Uh, the first week or two, it was a little disappointing. Nothing showed up, and then they started coming in. And we've actually gotten some things solved just based on what the residents have seen. Um, I guess it's like a community watch group without having the signs and stuff, but we've been getting some good information. Um, some people leave their name, we don't release it, but if you see something, you hear something, don't be afraid to stop by, drop a stamp or a box, it's something we can look into. We've had, uh, I feel really positive results with that. Uh, I know a lot of people don't like to come forward and, uh, but it's, it's been a good, good thing.
I wanna thank you for the parking up on Myers Avenue. The, uh, parking ticket you handed out, took care of it. They've never done it again. After several months, they've never done it.
But there's, again, you know, we're not here 24/7. The residents are. So you're our eyes and ears for the most part for now. So if you see something, our mailbox is down there. If you don't, can't get out, you can drop it off. But if we get something we can look into, as soon as we commit every shift, we have that mailbox, pull the letters out, and we've been able to follow up pretty good on a lot of things. So thank you.
Thank you, Timmy. Uh, before we go unfinished business, I'll just make an announcement. We do need an executive session tonight. It involves property, two items. One is in Alaska Street. We will be meeting with the property owners. And then after that, Salisbury Street, there's an issue that we're dealing with. So decisions or votes may be taken after the meeting. So after we prove the minutes, or if you have any questions, you can stay and come back in, or call Patty tomorrow as far as what votes were taken. It'll be all related to the, the property situation. Is that okay, Senator? We wanna be, were you okay so far with the sunshine?
I'm not a lawyer.
We're, we're trying.
We, we wouldn't bring you down on that level.
Okay. Um, okay, the police handbook, I know you haven't done change. Next week. Ambulance update, Karen?
Kenny's gonna speak for a minute. We, uh, we've, so after our April meeting, where we had all the state people in, um, we set up a task force, and we've been meeting monthly. We took this month off with a lot of conflicts going on. Um, Kenny and I went up and met with, um, a township, um, last night to get them up to speed a little bit. We have pretty much full compliance with everybody, um, except one township. And, um, so we will be ready to roll out an ordinance in September for everyone to adopt in all the nine townships. And how, how we're going to pay for this is gonna be up to each individual township. If we wanna use Keystone and do a per capita, or if we wanna do a mill to pay for it. But we have to stabilize their income because the ambulance is gonna go away in a couple of years if we don't get them some stable income. So, Ken?
I, I don't know where you want me to start tonight, um, as far as, I don't know what information you want. And I'll open it up to you guys. Um, I can throw a bunch of numbers out at you, but the, the problem with all this boils down to the fact that we have to pay our personnel to be able to keep them. And we are not able to do that. And I have open books, uh, at that particular meeting. And anyone on your council has access to this. And anyone in this room actually has access to this, uh, our financial, uh, burden that we have. And I'll make it as simple as I can. Myersdale Ambulance is a large business. In the, since one, one of 2022, and the reason I ran, ran two and a half years, just to give people an idea of how much this is, until July 31st of this year, we ran 4,702 calls. So, and whenever people look at this spread out over different areas, I'm not going to break it down because I can't remember all the figures exactly. You don't wanna talk about it because Myersdale Borough sucked up a lot of this. The reason that is, we have Myersdale Hospital, and we have Myersdale Lander, and we have 222 Main Street, and we have Orange Street Apartments, and we have several other high-volume areas that we get called to quite a bit. That being said, um, I'll give you that number. That number came out to be about 3,000 calls within the borough in that period of two and a half years. Last year, our budget was $850,000, some odd change. And as Karen pointed out, uh, we came out $2,000 to the good. We cannot do that on a long-term basis and survive, uh, period. I had Senator Stavano, uh, help me a ton with this, and Karen. And, uh, we had people from the Department of Health, uh, actually, the head EMS person from the Department of Health. And when he looked at my figures, his exact words to me, I don't know an ambulance service that answers that many calls within a period of time that operates a 24-hour crew under $1.2 billion. Well, we did it. Uh, our board has acted as the everyday supervisor for the, the, uh, ambulance for the last, oh man, ever since I can actually remember. Uh, I've been in the ambulance since 1988, so figure that out. Uh, and long story, we need help. Uh, I can answer individual questions if you want those questions answered, but I'm not going to go into a large spiel. I think Karen has a really good hand on it to present it to the board. Uh, I did not know what else to do. And I knew the state law, uh, the municipalities are required, uh, to somehow support that. But it's entirely up to you guys how you do it. Uh, and there are different models across the state. But I'm going to tell you one thing, and one thing only that was mentioned at all the meetings. And this came from you, sir. Uh, once you lose an ambulance, don't get it back. And I don't, I live here. It was a hard day. And there's been many other hard days. And I have taken care of people here. I will continue to do that. I want that to happen. I'm sorry, but today was not a good day. So I'll look at that.
Kenny, thank you for all you do in the ambulance. Uh, you know, we're big supporters, all of us.
I know you are.
And, uh, I'm sure we just have to figure out what way we wanna enforce, you know, the, or, or glean the income that you need for Myersdale. So we'll be working on that. Go ahead, Ron, then Karen, and then we'll move on.
You said, like, Garrett, Salisbury, the townships are all on board.
Yep. So far, these are the ones that I am very confident about. I go to speak with, uh, Garrett Bird next one. Uh, they have been at every meeting that we had, and they are extremely aware. Uh, so is, uh, some of the township. They are aware. Um, he said that could go either way, but I feel firmly that they know what's going on. Here, uh, Laramo, Cowalont, Greenville, we spoke with Uplook last night. Uplook had no questions, which was probably the weirdest one. Uh, I've had tons of questions in between times. Uh, I, I'm going to be very blunt, you know, people wanna know where money gets. I wanna know where my money gets. One of the proposals that I have with all this is from the ambulance's standpoint, as long as we set this up, I feel that whatever money goes to Myersdale Ambulance, we need to report back in a report to you every three months, six months, a year, whatever that may be, to report back that, we used $5,000 of that money to buy tires. We used $10,000 of that money to buy, uh, you know, a clot. I don't know, whatever you wanna lay it out to be. And that way, you guys have a wide item, wide item idea of where it goes. And it might be a big portion of it goes to, you know, buy an ambulance one year. A whole, whole portion of it goes to buy an ambulance.
Karen, did you wanna?
Yeah, remind me of, I know we're trying to get like $180,000
Yep.
from the nine municipalities to get them stabilized. What was Myersdale's portion?
Three seconds.
I forget. I just want them to have an idea.
Whatever they had, what they had working is down, actually, a million in Myersdale would be the following. Uh, that would be under the one mil market. Myersdale would be about $25,000.
So some municipalities, some municipalities have the money.
Correct.
They're going to pay it. They won't do any taxing.
Cowalont.
Yeah. And.
Laramo.
Yes.
Laramo talked about that, that one too. Uh, there are probably some tax increases in other places. I will be real honest, $25,000, when you look at what we charge for our membership, which as a part of that discussion, memberships would go away. And the reason that would be, uh, we could do something a little bit different, and we'll spread that word here now that we're here. Uh, one of the things that we would do differently is if you were a resident of Myersdale Borough, you would automatically be considered a member. Okay? So we would discharge your insurance company and call it even spiel because you have a Myersdale address. And it was brought up if the municipality didn't participate, or you had someone from out of the area. We were going to tackle a service charge for non-municipal representation of that. Uh, we can do that. We're allowed to charge over the Medicare rate, but for a specific reason only. And, uh, as far as that would go, that would, they decided that our board meeting would be about $250.
Per call?
Per, per call.
Per, per lift?
Yep.
Okay.
And, you know, I've had all you brought up with, uh, I actually had a conversation, uh, just today with a person, uh, unfortunately, we do charge for list assists. I mean, you'll hear all sorts of stuff on the scanner. Uh, don't, we've done everything possible to try to keep us solvent. And that includes every billion avenue that we have. Now, we charge for vehicle accidents. We, we actually, if we don't transport somebody, we still, our guys will get the insurance information as best they can, and then we'll send the insurance company out, which they are allowed to in the state.
Well, Kenny, thank you for coming. Um, well, Mike.
I'm sorry.
We'll move on here a little bit, but we appreciate it, and we're behind you 100%. Okay, go ahead. Ron, then we'll move on.
Okay. Is it legal then? We have the money up at the bank instead of putting a mill in. The taxpayers.
Yes, we can take that.
Take $25,000 of that money.
Yeah.
Okay. That, that's, that's another decision for, he's just asking, but we can put that on the agenda for next month. I, I'd really like to kind of keep moving here because we have other items to. Karen, thank you for the report. Kenny, thank you. Thanks, Kenny.
No, I don't have anything.
Okay. Um, we took care of the Vietnam, Korean Memorial. I just signed the deeds, whatever they are, and then you have to. Subdiv, you have to get the information because let's try to get this done by September. This has been kind of hanging around. Uh, job descriptions, uh, you say you're ready to go on those? Okay. Uh, COVID, we discussed that. Ordinance 435, uh, chickens and farm animals. Can we push that off to next month?
I'm sure everybody will need it.
Our cleanup day, Harbaugh. Um, anything there? Clarence? You were gonna get a cost, what it would cost for a couple dumpsters?
Yeah, he never, I hope, get that.
September? Okay. Uh, ATV adopted. Little League concession stand repairs. Uh, that's been taken care of. Hopefully, I wouldn't do too much till we get these cameras up, and then hopefully, we're gonna catch these perps, these little. Okay, we did the tree at the Burris Shed, quote, "to change electrical outlet, outlets on the decorative lamp posts." Okay, well, that can, that can go to, just as long as you're moving on and want some information for September. Um, Community Foundation for the Alleghenies Grant.
So we got, if you guys wanna get specific, we don't have to. Wendy can tell you. When Renaissance has applied for, for grants for them, if you have a general idea of what you wanna do, your final decisions can be adjusted. You just have a conversation with them. So we have some notes in the, the current grant all ready to go. Or I did get, um, a proposal, um, from the company. And if you guys want to, you can take five minutes and say, first choice number one, second choice number two, third choice number three, real quick, give them back to me. I'll calculate it, give it to Patty tomorrow, and we'll adjust and submit the grant the way you want it.
Is the council going to, um, if they don't get a grant, are they gonna go through with getting whatever using the $5,000 they need to make that?
Well, and there's one other thing, is we actually have $11,000 in the beautification fund. We got another deposit. So I wondered if we wanted to tell them that we would do the $7,500 match.
Is that in Lucetti?
No.
Or Lucetti said $11,000? Or Lakinby?
Lakinby.
Yeah, sorry. I did notice that on.
You should have a vote, motion, vote.
And here's the thing. So we're not gonna find out from the community foundation till after the sale is off. If you order early in the year when they're not busy, you get a better deal. You can see the sale prices go off next week. So my suggestion is, this isn't a this year that we're gonna have new lights. Um, it's a this year, we're gonna try to secure the money to get some new lights to at least get started replacing things. Um, so I don't think we'll actually order anything until after we hear. And they'll be for next year, and we'll get them while they're on sale.
I like that idea, yeah. Not rush it to. Community Foundation.
So we're gonna just submit it like it is, and then we'll finesse it after the first of the year? Is that what you mean?
But we, we need to know how, what the borough's intention is. Is that what you're saying, Patty?
Yeah, is it just 5,000 or 7,500? Are they gonna move forward with using Lakinby funds if they don't get the grant?
I think we should. I mean, that's what the money's for, and it's not taxpayer money. It can't be used for anything but beautification, right?
Right.
So what's more beautiful than holiday lights? And, and the thing is, the firemen have their hands full. These weigh 12 to 15 pounds. They're LED, they're sized appropriately.
They'll probably be brighter.
They're gonna be, they're gonna be brighter, they're gonna be energy efficient. They're gonna be easy to take up and take down.
What motion, um, would you like us, just make a motion then?
I make a motion that we say we would put up 7,500 of the $11,000 we have in the Lakinby fund.
Is there a second? Jenny, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Unanimous. Thank you, Karen.
And are you gonna make a motion that you'll go move forward with using that money if you don't get the grant, so we can put that in the grant paperwork?
Yeah.
Yes.
I make that motion.
Jenny seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That's unanimous. Where are we here? Community Foundation for the Alleghenies Grant? Nothing there. Social media policy.
We already talked about it. We already talked about it.
Announcements, the oversurface, the over, for the oversurface, approved pension minimum municipal obligation, is that this here, Patty?
No.
We, we just, it's a, it's for your retirement, it's just an automatic thing we need to approve.
It's actually part of our agreement with the pension plan.
This is right here.
You have to do a motion to that.
When we entered it, when we renewed the pension plan, we also agreed to do that every year.
So is there a motion to approve the pension minimum municipal obligation? We have to do it. Clarence? Terry, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Unanimous. Moving along, gym rental?
I have a question. I just want to make sure we dot all our i's and cross all our t's, so like the D is going to do in October, they have a contract, they have an insurance certificate with us listed as an additional assured, that's all in place for everybody that rents the gym.
I think what we do now is a waiver. Do they sign a waiver?
Nobody signed a waiver for rent the gym for birthday parties or whatever, that's never been.
I really think, like an exercise class, you know, I break my leg in there, you know, whatever, and we're charging a fee, I think, depending on what they're renting it for, I think we need to be protecting the borough from some liability.
I can bring to council at this, this next meeting, I can email it out.
I mean, what does everybody else think?
As you desire.
I mean, I don't want to hinder.
For something like that, isn't a big cost.
I would think.
You mean that to buy the policy?
Yeah, to buy the policy.
Typically not.
It's typically not something that should generally, just for a short term.
I mean, if she's running a business, she should have insurance to protect herself too. So do they sign a contract?
I told her she could have it for the $15 an hour like everybody else used. Now, I also told her she could come and ask the council if they wanted to give her a monthly rate, but.
Well, do we currently sit here, do you have any other rate to give, I guess?
No.
Well, if, if it's a business, I could see having some protection from the borough, but the, the sports teams that come in here, I don't think, we don't charge them, it's free, because for all the students, any sports team that wants to come in and use the building, and I think it should remain that way. But, but this is just for people that are renting. Why don't we kick that and make a, think about it and make a decision next month? And then come up with, they have to have some kind of a waiver, if, if it's a business.
Well, I, I have one that I use with campgrounds, that would probably meet that, because I think what Jenny's referring to is, I've dealt a lot with, you know, if somebody's going to have a wedding or an event, it's a day or two, their home, either their homeowner's insurance covers it, or they have another policy that covers it, and there are ones available, so I can send that out to councils that you desire.
Okay. Federal aviation, is this what you're talking about, the helicopter? Okay. The emergency access road, we did discuss that, that's moving forward. I did just want to mention that Clarence and I and Ron, you know, got together to look at this, I hadn't seen it since I left council, and we, certainly, there were three of us, very legitimate legal meeting, we had discussed no business, where there was no quorum, but it's no different than Terry when you and I go up to, me with Mr. Randy Tressler, you know, I mean, you have to go out and see projects, you have to go out and see things, but I was glad I learned a lot, and if we could put the money to pave that, I think that would be wonderful, but we had discussed, can we take this off the agenda now, you think, because we're going to, Brian's going to go ahead and do what he has to do, or do we want to leave it on because of the possibility of using the COVID money to pave that area?
We should probably leave it on.
To us done. And then flood riprap?
Shouldn't we, we thank Senator Stefano for what he did for us last time on the flooding drill? I mean, he is here, and he was the integral part that a lot of time.
But we're struggling, we've got a letter that says we're at the very minimal, I mean, we're almost in default.
Are you aware of our predicament with this time at the other end? Last time we got grants to clean the Catch Basin and repair, remember we were down there one day, the big crack, that was taken care of, thanks to you, but now we have a serious situation, as Karen says, with this riprap, it keeps washing away, and we've applied for grants on it, but, but is there any way you could help us with that?
We just applied for 400 and some thousand dollars through COVID ARPA, ARPA, I think.
I mean, we've had plans, engineering plans growing up.
No, I'm, I'm pretty sure it's ARPA, and it had a 15% match, but we agreed to do 25% to try to up our odds of getting it. We were told, Aspire helped us, and they said we're supposed to hear fourth quarter.
Everything's running behind, so I'm.
Is it?
Apparently it was on hold. Special announcements involving the governor, so things will start moving again.
Okay, so you think it could be first quarter till we hear on that?
I haven't heard of it, but it's delayed, it was delayed broadband grants and delays and CMAs, and the RCAPs or RICPs, those are delayed, those I've not heard of yet.
All righty, well, if there's nothing else, then I'll ask for a motion that we do go into executive session. As I said, we're only discussing two property items, there's a good chance decisions, votes will be taken after the executive session we come out. So could we have that motion? Okay, Ron, and then Terry seconded. We're going to ask the Shalises to stay. Travis, are you staying with your? Okay.
We all hold it against you.
The Mathiases, these are individuals that have property around, so that's why they're staying? Executive session's starting now.